Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ryan Awesome. And welcome to the Ryan Awesome Show. Now in this episode of D Ryan Awesome Show, once again, and always, I will be reviewing AEW Dynamite. So this is the AEW Dynamite Review for October 28th, 2020. And overall, like always, this is a great show. On this show, we had Warlow versus Hangman Adam Page in the AEW Title Eliminator. The winner of that match would have gone on to the finals at full gear. We had, we had Eddie Kingston versus Matt Sidell. We had the Cody Rhodes versus Orange Cassidy for the TNT Championship. We had the Inner Circle Town Hall Meeting, which is great. We had, we had Pentagon versus Kenny Omega in the main event. In the AEW Title Eliminator Match, I'm gonna talk about that too. And so yeah, overall, this is a great show, great show. They never, AEW never disappoint us. So yeah, first off, we started off the show with Dasha. She interviews Warlow, and MJF is with him. And so she, she asked Warlow about the AEW Title Eliminator Tournament. And MJF, he goes, he interrupts, he was like, he was saying, you know, if Warlow, he wins, if he wins the tournament, if he wins the tournament, and he beats the champion, that means that I'm the champion. Because Warlow, he's under contract to me. He's under contract with me. Which means whatever he owns, whatever is his property, is my property. And so he was like, isn't that right, Warlow? And then Warlow, he was like, "Yeah, yeah, 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 you got it, you got it, man, yeah." And so Sammy Guevara, he comes in, he interrupts. And so MJF, he was like, "Hey buddy, nice jacket, like, nice jacket, buddy." He talking about that big jacket that he got Sammy Guevara. And so Sammy, he gets mad, he throws the jacket down, and they're like, "Man, screw this jacket." And so, you're like, "I'm not your buddy, I'm not your friend, and tonight, I'm gonna make sure that you don't join the Inner Circle." And then at one point, MJF, he says that Sammy Guevara look like a, he looks like a person that sells Adderall to middle schoolers. LL is funny. And so, right after that, we went to Warlow versus Hangman Adam Page. So yeah, this is, this is a great match, great match. Once again, dominant performance from Warlow. And so, yeah, Warlow, he comes out to the ring, and then Hangman Adam Page, he comes out. And when Hangman Adam Page, he came out, he went right after Warlow. He took off his jacket, and then just ran towards Warlow, and gave him a dropkick to the corner. And they were fighting, 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 and fighting. And so, at one point, Hangman Adam Page, he gives Warlow a clothesline, a middle rope clothesline, and knocks Warlow out of the ring. And then Page, he goes for a dive, he tries to dive on Warlow, Warlow catches him, and you know, Warlow, he tries to slam him, and so, Hangman Adam Page, he got out of it, he reversed it, and just threw Warlow into the turn post, into the ring post. And so, right after that, Warlow, he spears, he spears Hangman Adam Page through the guard rail, the guard rail, or the barricade, whatever you wanna call it, he speared him through that, and that thing looked, oh my god, it looked nasty. And so, yeah, the referee was counting to ten, and the referee was really close to that ten count. The referee was counting slow, she was like, "Nine." And then like, it would have been ten, he would have been counted out, and referee was slowing down her count. And so Hangman Adam Page, he made it to the ring. It was like, maybe like 9.999 seconds. And so yeah, and then Warlow, he delivers a power slam, now Hangman Adam Page, Page kicks out at two. And then Warlow, he gives Page a suplex throw. And then he gives him a gut wrench powerbomb, and Page kicks out at two. And then, and then at one point, Adam Hangman Page, he gives Warlow a cross arm breaker on the ropes. And so, yeah, he, he released a hold, and then Warlow, he's just suplex Adam, Adam Hangman Page right back into the ring. And so, Warlow, he goes for his Centime Bomb, he missed. And then Page, he fights back, he fights back with clotheslines and elbow strikes, and, and then he tries to go for his outside moonsault that he usually goes for. And so, he, he goes for it. He hits it, and then he, he goes for his buckshot lariat, he brings, he brings Warlow right back into the ring, and he goes for his buckshot lariat, and he missed. And then Warlow, he turns that buckshot lariat into a clothesline of his own. And so, and then Warlow, he picks up Adam Hangman Page and delivers the F-10. And Page, he rolls out of the ring, smart. And so, and then at one point, they both get at the top rope, they're fighting at the top rope. And Page, he delivers a followaway slam, I think that's what it was, a followaway slam to Warlow from the top rope. So it would have been a super followaway slam. And then, and then towards the end of this match, he delivers a buckshot lariat to Warlow. The first buckshot lariat to Warlow, Warlow still stands up, like, he gets on one knee, he gets on one knee after he get, get hit with the buckshot lariat. And then Adam Hangman Page, he goes on the other side of the ring, and delivers another buckshot lariat, and it knocks down Warlow. And Adam Hangman Page goes for the cover one, two, three, and Adam Hangman Page wins, and is going to full gear in the finals. So yeah, that, this was great. And so, yeah, it was, it was predictable too. Nobody, nobody thought that Hangman Adam Page was gonna lose. But yeah, Adam Hangman Page is going to the finals, and he's gonna face the winner of the Pentagon and Kenny Omega match, and we all know who's gonna win that. So yeah, this is a great, great match, great performance from Warlow and Adam Hangman Page. And so, right after this, we had a vignette from John Moxley, and he talks about the AEW Championship. And he says that he defended the championship all year with everything he had to grow, to cultivate, and foster the championship, to make it the number one prize in the sport. And so he said on November 7th at full gear, it's personal. You know, he's not, he's not going to defend the AEW Championship, he's gonna weaponize it. He says that there is no reason for this Eddie Kingston in AEW. He says there is no reason for Eddie Kingston, for this Eddie Kingston in AEW. And so he says, "AEW is for the greatest athletes in the world, who do the work, who put their asses on the line, who have guts." When he looks around, when Eddie Kingston looks around, there is no one else to blame. And he's gonna have to say the words, "I quit." He's gonna be alone with his ego, and it's gonna be a painful realization because I'm gonna do to him what I've done to everybody else in AEW. And he said, you know, he says, "You know what I'm gonna do to Eddie Kingston? Is the same thing that I've done to everyone who had a big mouth. I crush wind pipes, I crush skulls, and I more, most importantly, crush egos." And he tells Eddie Kingston, "Protect your neck." My god, man, this, I can't wait for this match. That's all I gotta say, man, I cannot wait for this match. And then they have a face-to-face next week, man, oh my god, man, the back and forth that these two will have on, on the microphone, man. Bro. All, all I'm saying is I can't wait for the match. I can't wait for full gear. And then right after this, we had Eddie Kingston with the Butcher, the Blade, and the Bunny in his corner versus Matt Sidell. And so, Eddie Kingston, he comes out first, he comes to the ring, he grabs the microphone, and he says, "How dare the world champion not show up here tonight?" Talking about John Moxley. And so, he says, Eddie Kingston, yeah, Eddie Kingston, he wants to fight. He wants to fight, but the world champion is at home. And so he, he calls him a coward, calls John Moxley a coward, and then at one point, he tells the cameraman to get out of the ring. He was like, he was like, "Yeah, I know they told you to get in this ring, but don't, don't get in my ring, get out of here. You, you never trained to be here, so get out of my world." And so, he said, "Tonight, he's gonna take on a man who tried to take his thunder away, who tried to steal his thunder in the Casino Battle Royale." And he's talking about, he, he was the Joker, and he's talking about Matt Sidell. And once again, he mentioned again that he wasn't eliminated from the Battle Royale. And he says, "Hi Lance," and he was talking to Lance Archer, who was sitting in the crowd with Jake the Snake Roberts. And so, and so yeah, right after that, he was like, "Yeah, bring out the Joker," he was like, "Bring out the Joker, bring out Matt Sidell." And he says, "Moxley, I hope you're watching from home." And so we had the match with Eddie Kingston and Matt Sidell. First, we started off, this match was hold for hold, we went from waist locks to head locks, to hammer locks, and collar and elbows. And we had an arm drag to Kingston. So yeah, Matt Sidell, he was, he was taking it to Kingston. Arm dragging him, roll it up, like, putting him in roll-up schoolboys and crucifix, and Kingston, he kicks out. And then he delivers a jumping kick to Kingston. I think it was a jumping, a spinning kick, he hit that to Kingston. And then he goes for a corner drop tick, a corner drop tick, a corner drop kick to Eddie Kingston, and Kingston, he kicks out at one. So yeah, when he delivered that running kick, corner kick to Eddie Kingston, he hit him right in his mouth. And so, Sidell, he goes after the leg, Kingston's leg, and Kingston, he takes control during the commercial break, gives him back, a back elbow, and then Kingston, he chops Sidell. And we had Matt Sidell give a jumping knee, a jumping knee to Kingston, and Kingston kicks out at two. And then we had Matt Sidell deliver a meteor to Kingston, Kingston kicks out at two. Roll-up after roll-up after roll-up to Eddie Kingston. And, you know, cuz Matt Sidell, he really wanted to win this match. He really wanted to win this match against Eddie Kingston. And you know, Eddie Kingston, he can't play around with Matt Sidell, cuz if he do, he will lose. So yeah, they, they play that up home commentary. And so, yeah, right after this, Eddie Kingston, he was done, he was done, he give Matt Sidell a kitchen sink. And then he's delivering, he delivers his spinning back fist, I don't know what he calls it, but he delivers his spinning back fist to Sidell, he usually goes for the cover, but he didn't go for the cover. And so he goes for the, he goes for John Moxley's Bulldog Choke, the same move that Eddie Kingston passed out from the last time he met John Moxley. And so, he delivers the Bulldog Choke to Sidell, Sidell taps out. And so, right after the match, Eddie Kingston, he still had the hold locked in. And so the referee tried to break it up, and the Butcher, Blade, they stopped the referee from breaking it up. Like, "Man, back up, you better back up." And so, the Bunny, the Bunny was there too, the Bunny, she hands the microphone, she grabs the microphone, and she gets in the ring, and she, and then Eddie Kingston, he just yells, "Quit, Moxley, quit." Pretending, he, he was yelling, "Quit, Moxley," to Matt Sidell, pretending that it was John Moxley. And so, yeah, Eddie Kingston, he still had the lock holding, the lock, he still had the, the lock on Matt Sidell. And then, he say, "Quit, Moxley, quit," and then Sidell says, "I quit." And so, the commentary team, you know, was saying, "That's not, that's not John Moxley, that's not Moxley." And then, and then the others were saying, you know, "He's sending a message, he's sending a message, John Moxley, he's showing you what's, what exactly is gonna happen at full gear, that he's gonna make Moxley say, 'I quit.'" And so yeah, that was, that was the end of that, that was the end of the match. And then right after this, we had an interview, we had an interview from Excalibur. Excalibur, he interviewed the Young Bucks in person. And he interviewed FTR, who were in a different location, so it was in split screens. And so, oh yeah, and Tony Blanchard was with, was with FTR. And so, Excalibur, he asks Matt Jackson how was his ankle? And Matt says, "It's fine, his ankle is good." And so he was like, "This match, you know, Matt, he says, "This match been brewing for years, and you think some, some, some phony injury, some baby injury, like an ankle injury is gonna take me away from full gear?" And so, he was saying that, "Yeah, I'm gonna show up to full gear, no matter how hurt I am, I'm gonna show up at full gear." And so, Excalibur, he didn't ask FTR, "Why would you jeopardize a match that's been brewing for years that everybody been buzzing about? Why would you jeopardize that?" And so, Dax Harwood, he get, he talks. He says, "You know, I'm not afraid of internet backlash. This match between us and the Bucks, yes, is a dream match, but for us, we're not worried about a dream match. Above any dream matches us as AEW World Tag Team Champions." And he says, "At full gear, whoever walks out as a tag team champions, they are the best tag team in the world. They submit their legacy as the best tag team in the world." And so, Excalibur, he, he then asks the Bucks, "You know, I know you got us for years," and then Cash, he interrupts Excalibur before he could get to his questioning. And so he said, "Yeah, yeah, we know you know them for years, that's why you have a job here, that's why you get paid, that's why you get paychecks, because you guys are buddies, that's why." And so, yeah, Excalibur, he, he finishes his question. And so he was saying that, you know, there are buzz in the locker room, there are a lot of buzz in the locker room saying that you guys are, you know, whatever happened to Nick Jackson, no, what happened to Nick Jackson, not Nick Jackson, what happened to Matt Jackson last week was, were up come, were comeuppance. Comeuppance, I mean. And so Matt, he says, "Me and Nick, we like to think of ourselves as good people. And sometimes good people do bad things. Do we regret the things that we have done lately? You know, while we're not proud of what, what's been going on, I, I don't think, I don't think we do regret it. Because for the last year, we've been suffering, and we've realized that something was missing, some type of spark and edge that we couldn't get our finger on it. And then in a moment, these two pricks started screwing with our livelihood and manipulating our friends, talking about FTR. Something changed within me and Nick, and it started clicking again, the killer instinct, the old Young Bucks is back. And will this be the cause of their undoing?" And yeah, that's what he was asking himself. And he says, "Maybe, I don't know. And I, I don't know, I don't know if I like it or not. I don't like, I, I don't know if I like it the way that I, that I feel, I don't know if I like it that way. But this is the way that I feel, and Nick feels, and I hope these guys are ready for it." And so Nick says, you know, Nick, you know, Excalibur, he asked Nick the question, he didn't ask Nick's, he asked Nick a question about them having something to lose. And, you know, oh yeah, before that, we had FTR leave the interview because Excalibur kept asking the Buck, Bucks question instead of FTR. And so, yeah, Nick, he was saying, "Yeah, we have a lot to lose, a lot to lose more than the championships." And he doesn't know if he against the stipulation that Matt come, came up with or not. And so, he, he tells Matt to, you know, tell him, tell him the stipulation that you came up with. And so he says that, you know, "Growing up, nothing was ever handed to us. We had to teach ourselves how to wrestle." He was like, "That's, that was our college education, we had to teach ourselves how to wrestle. And every time we succeeded on the Indies was because of us. We bet on ourselves, our backs were against the wall, and we had nothing to lose, and we always came through because we bet on ourselves." And so, the stipulation that Matt Jackson came up with was that if, if they lose, if the Bucks lose against FTR, they will never challenge for the Tag Team Championships ever again. And so I was like, "Man, I was like, man, this is, this is, this, this, this is what making the matches like, ah." I'm thinking, now, now we're gonna know who, who's gonna win, now we know who's gonna win. The, yeah, the Young Bucks. But I, I don't see them taking the championships away from FTR, because they've done a great job as Tag Team Champions. But, but since they said that, since they said, "We'll never challenge for the championships ever again," I have a feeling that the Bucks will win. Because like, nobody, nobody think that the Bucks ain't gonna challenge for the championship ever again. They will, they will eventually go after the Tag Team Championships, because what else are they gonna go after? They're a tag team, what else, what other titles are they gonna go after if they can't go after the Tag Team Championships? And so yeah, that's why, that's why I think that they might go with the Bucks to win. But I think FTR, I think FTR gonna retain those titles, I don't, I don't see, I, I don't see a reason to take the titles away from them, you shouldn't. But yeah, that was, that was the end of that. And then we had, and then we had the Inner Circle Town Hall Meeting. And Tony Schiavone and Dasha were the moderators. And so the Inner Circle comes out, and it was Sammy, Sammy Ortiz, Santana, Chris Jericho, Jake Hager wasn't there. Because he was getting ready for a fight. And so he had a crowd, they sing Judas, and then MJF comes out to the ring. And then we had Luchasaurus give a question, we had questions from the, from the wrestlers, from the audience. And so Luchasaurus, he goes up to the mic, and he asks, he asks MJF a question. And so he says, "As a representative of dinosaurs, and as a medieval historian, I understand the power of economics in creating change over time within societies. So considering MJF, that you don't have a master's degree like I do, how can you contribute to the earning potential and ensure the continued financial prosperity of the Inner Circle?" And then MJF, he goes, "Wow, man, that was, that was a great question from a dinosaur." And then he shows a, a chart, he shows a statistical chart of the benefits of him joining the, in the circle. And so, the chart, the chart didn't even make any sense. The chart didn't even make any sense. And so, he had a chart. Yeah, the, the pre MJF was going up and down, the line was going up and down, and then the post MJF of him joining the Inner Circle who was going upwards. And so, the crowd booed him, and MJF, he was like, "What? It's math, it's math." And so, we had, the next question, we had Britt Baker with Reba. And Reba, she was up there, she was drooling over Chris Jericho, saying that he has a nice smile, you look, you look handsome when you smile and stuff like that. And then Britt Baker just pushes Reba out of the way, and so Britt, she asked a question, and she says, "You know, I love, I love MJF, don't get me wrong, he's great, but you don't have to be a dentist, which I am, to see that MJF has a terrible track record when it comes to friendships to AEW. You know, and how, you know, how, she asked Chris Jericho, "How does it make you feel, Le Champion?" And so Jericho says, "That's a valid point, and I'm very aware of MJF's past, but I'm not a dipshit like Cody. So we're not letting MJF into our Inner Circle, no pun intended. He knows nothing about our strategies, about our plans, about our secrets. And if you do try to turn on us, we'll knock your freaking teeth down your throat." And so MJF, he tries to calm the Inner Circle down, saying that, you know, "I'll, I'll never turn my back on you. We, we all got, we all got into this great profession for a reason. For the same reason, I guess, yeah." No, he says, yeah, he says, "We all got into this great profession for the same reason, money and championships. And I promise you, all of us together as one, we're gonna get a whole lot of green and a whole lot of gold." And so, the next question came from Peter Avalon, the librarian. And so, he, he only had one question, he says, "Can I join the Inner Circle?" And so, the Inner Circle and MJF, they laughed, they laughed at Peter Avalon. And it was like, "No, that's not a chance, not a chance." And so the next question came from a guy named Eric B. from Cody, Wyoming. And so, it was Eric Bischoff, Bischoff came out. And so, he had a three-part question. So his first question was, you know, "In January 20th, 1961, President John F. Kennedy during his inaugural address said, 'Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. MJF, what can you do for the Inner Circle?'" And then MJF, he was like, "Eric, that was a, that was a great question, and it was a very powerful question. And I only have one word, one powerful word to answer that question with, friendship." And then the crowd booed, the crowd booed MJF again. And then Eric Bischoff, he gets to his next question. He says, "Mr. Freeman, given that most would consider you to be nearly a complete package as a wrestler, what is it that you believe the Inner Circle can do for you?" And then MJF says, "Eric, I gotta correct you, I'm not nearly, I'm not nearly a, a, a total package, I am a total package." Well, I'm, while I am the total package, he says, "I have to admit, while I am the total package, there is one dent in my armor. I might not be a great team player, but I believe that, no, I may not be a great team player, but once I join the Inner Circle, I could learn how to be a team player." And so, Eric Bischoff, he gets to his third question. "I've worked, I've worked for Mr. Jericho for many years, and most would agree with me that he's a prima donna." So he calls Jericho a prima donna, Jericho gets upset at that, he argues with, he argues with Eric Bischoff. And so, Tony Schiavone was cutting Chris Jericho off, just telling him, "Hey, Jericho, is Mr. Eric Bischoff, is, is Eric Bischoff's time?" He's like, telling Chris Jericho to stop, let Eric Bischoff have the, the floor. And so, Tony Schiavone, he tells Jericho to shut up. And so the look on Jericho's face, he was stunned, he was like, he was like, "Man, this guy just told me to shut up." And so, Tony Schiavone, yeah, tells Jericho to shut up, and Eric Bischoff, he finishes his question. He says, "Given that you have those same prima donna-esque characteristics," and then MJF tried to cut him off. And MJF, he was like, "Whoa, whoa, 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 whoa." And then Eric Bischoff, he was like, "Let me finish my question." And so, he says, "What is the guarantee that if you join the Inner Circle, that you two don't just end up killing each other?" And so MJF, he was getting annoyed, he got annoyed with that question. And he was getting annoyed at the fact that he was getting booed the entire time. And, and he was going on and on and saying, "I'm a great person, and I came out of here as a sign of respect, Chris." And Jericho, he, he, he cuts MJF off, he was like, "Come on, hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up." Like, like, "Stop, stop, stop." Answer his question. And then MJF, he was, he was, he was concerned, he was like, "You can't be serious, right, Chris?" And he was, he got mad, he was like, "How about you answer a question, Chris?" And so MJF, he was like, "Week after week, I have checked every single box, I've done everything for you, Chris. Presents, I gave you, I gave you presents, great TV, friendship, and to top that, last week, I gave you the best segment of your whole entire career, and the world, the best segment in the history of professional wrestling. And so, I asked, "What haven't I done?" And so Jericho, he responds and says, "You haven't beaten me." And so, so he says, "You haven't beaten me," and he challenges MJF to a match at full gear. And if Jericho, if MJF wins, then that means that MJF will join the Inner Circle. And so, MJF, he was excited about this opportunity, and so he says that he would do anything it takes to win, and he says, "Anything, whatever the hell that means, something might happen in this match." And so, right after that, we had Ortiz interrupt MJF, tells MJF to shut up, "All you do is run your mouth." And he says, "Sammy and I don't want you in the Inner Circle." And Santana, Santana is in the middle, he might be in the middle, he don't know yet. And Jake Hager, he's, he's too busy getting ready for a fight. "But don't you believe for one second, because Chris is entertaining you, that you have a shot to get in the Inner Circle?" And so Ortiz, he challenges MJF and Warlow into a tag team match. So it's gonna be Ortiz and Sammy Guevara versus MJF and Warlow. And the reason why this match was made was so that MJF won't make it to full gear. And so, yeah, this is, this is kinda confusing though. If MJF, a one-on-one match between Chris Jericho and MJF, and if MJF wins, he joins the Inner Circle? Like, I wanna like, hold up, I wanna like, why don't, why don't just put him in your group? If you want him to join your group so bad, just, just put him in a group. Like, like, it, it seems like it don't make any sense. He has to beat Chris Jericho to join the group. And plus, it's a, it's a heel versus heel match. And sometimes, most of the time heel hi, versus heel matches don't work. But it might, it might work, because it's Chris Jericho and MJF. But yeah, I don't know what's gonna happen at full gear. If MJF joins the group or not. Me, I said it, I said it weeks ago, I don't think MJF should join the group Because he has a massive ego. But, but we'll see, we'll see what happens. So yeah, this is, this is a great segment. And then we had Team Taz. We had a vignette from Team Taz, talking about Will Hobbs, trying to recruit Will Hobbs. And they still trying to get a word from Will Hobbs, cuz they never heard back from him. And so, And they wondering is he Team Taz or not? And they were complimenting Will Hobbs, saying he's big, he's strong, athletic, Powerful. All these great characteristics of Will Hobbs. We want him on our team. And so, yeah. That, that was it. I think, I think personally, I think he should join Team Taz. I think he should join. Because, you know, he's not, he's not doing much of anything anyway. He, he, I don't think he will ever make it on his own, but if he, if he's with Taz And Brian Cage and Ricky Starks, Dude, that is a recipe for success. You have, you have Taz in your corner, man. And I don't, I don't even think we ever heard this guy speak. And you know, Taz, Taz could do the speaking for him. If he joins Team Taz. And yeah, it'll be great for Will Hobbs, it'll be great for him, it'll increase his stock. It'll boost up his confidence, it'll get his character out there. It'll, it'll make him a better person, it'll make him a better professional wrestler. And Yeah, you, you working with Taz. And you working with Brian Cage, and you working with Ricky Starks, what better can you get? And another thing, You could, you could put, you could put Will Hobbs and Brian Cage together And send them after the Tag Team Titles. And you could send Ricky Starks after the TNT Championship. That's, that's a great idea. That's, that's finding something for him to do. So yeah, that's why I think Will Hobbs should join Team Taz. He should join Team Taz. He, he has the potential to be great. But if he joined Team Taz, he'll be greater. And so, yeah, that's all I have to say about it. But next, we had Orange Cassidy versus Cody Rhodes For the TNT Championship in a lumberjack match. And The lumberjack match, I think the lumberjack match took away. The lumberjacks outside of the ring, they took away from the match. You could've, you could've done this without the lumberjack match. But it, it was hectic, that's what it was, it was a hectic match. You had so many bodies out there, you couldn't even pay attention to what Cody and Orange were doing. And so you had Cody with Orange, Dustin Rhodes was out there, and QT Marshall. You had Orange Cassidy, the best friends out there. You had everybody else around the ring, you had the Dark Order. And you had everybody else, you had the Gun Club, you had The usual people. And so, yeah, you had, He started off the match with an orange punch attempt, so Orange Cassidy, he went for his orange punch. Missed. Cody Rhodes went for a crossroads. Orange blocks it. And then Orange goes for his mousetrap. Cody reverses it. And then Cody, he throws Cassidy into the turnbuckle pad hard. And then Orange, he delivers a backslide to Cody, Cody kicks out a two. And then we had Cody Rhodes delivering a gourd buster to Orange. And then right after the gourd buster, he went for his, his pushups that he usually does. So yeah, Cody been doing the pushups a lot In his matches, and he done it here tonight, he done it here On AEW Dynamite last night. And so, Aron Anderson, he's getting upset. He got upset at Cody Rhodes. And he was telling Cody to get serious, man, get serious. Stop showing off. And so we had a vertical suplex to Cody Rhodes. And then the lumberjacks at one point get involved. You had Orange Cassidy get out the ring, knocked out of the ring, the best friend catches him. You had Trent and Chucky, they catch Orange Cassidy, and they held on to him, they held on to him and brought him back into the ring. And then Cody, they throwing Cody out the side of the ring. Cody got knocked out of the ring, and he landed in the best friend's arms, and the best friend dropped him. The best friend dropped him, and so Cody got mad. He was pushing and shoving the best friends. And then They got back in the ring. And at one point, Orange Cassidy, he knocks Cody Rhodes to the ropes. And then Trent, he just gives Cody shots. He gave him a, a, a cheap shot to Cody Rhodes. And so, we had a cross body to Cody Rhodes, and then a swinging DDT to Cody Rhodes. And we had a splash attempt To Cassidy. No, a splash attempt to Cody. And then, yeah, he was, yeah, Orange Cassidy, he was going for a splash, and then Cody Rhodes, he got the knees up. And blocked it, so he blocked it. And so Cody and Orange there at the top of the rope. Cody delivers a superplex to Orange Cassidy outside of the ring. And then right after that, oh yeah, on, on top of the lumberjacks too, forgot to mention that, on top of the lumberjacks. And then right after that, we had ten minutes remaining. And so, Right after the, right after that, we had a Cody cutter to Orange, Orange kicks out a two. Superkick to Cody, clothesline to Orange. And then we had a stunt dog millionaire to Cody Rhodes. And then, we had Orange Cassidy deliver a slinging DDT to Cody Rhodes. A wicked, wicked slinging DDT. And then we had a, a beach break to Cody Rhodes, and he kicks out a two. And then towards the end of the match, we had The Dark Order get involved, yeah, they were outside of the ring too, as the lumberjacks, the Dark Order. Five, I think it was five, he got in the ring, tried to distract the referee. And then John Silver came from behind The referee's back and gave Orange Cassidy a pump kick. And so right after that, you know, Cody didn't see it. And so Cody, he throws John Silver out of the ring, cuz he's in the ring. And he delivers the crossroads, he delivers the crossroads to Orange Cassidy For the one-two-three. And Cody Rhodes wins. And he's going to full gear. It was predictable, we all knew Cody was going to the full gear, and he's facing Darby Allen. Oh yeah, Darby Allen was there too, he was sitting in the crowd, watching all this stuff going on. And so, He has gonna be Cody versus Darby. And He had a lumberjacks, they attacked each other after the match. And that was it, we had Cody versus Darby at full gear. And then we had Alex Marvez, he tries to interview the best friends. And then Miro and Kip Sabian, they interrupted the best friends, and they were They were Playing jokes on them, they were saying that Yeah, they were, they were playing jokes on them by having Penelope Ford Dress up as Orange Cassidy, saying trick or treat, and giving them a present. And stuff like that, and best friends was like, man, we do not have time for y'all. And so they, they tried to walk away. And stuff like that. And they handed them the present, they handed them the present, and they got attacked. They got attacked into that locker room. And so the present was the, the broken game machine that happened weeks ago. And so, right after that, we had the women's match. We had Serena Deeb, who was the new NWA Women's Champion, she defeated Dan DeRosa Versus Leila Hirsch. So yeah, this match, this is, this is, this is a good match, this is a great match. We had The entire time, it, this was nothing more than a mat wrestling match. It was a mat wrestling, we had a waistlock to Hirsch. Hirsch escapes, turns it into a front face lock. And they, they mentioned on commentary that she's a, a standout amateur wrestler. And so we had a A clothesline to Deeb. And then we had Hirsch deliver a running double knee to Deeb in the corner. And then she turns it into a dropkick. And then we had Serena Deeb deliver a hangman's neckbreaker to Hirsch on a rope. And then we had a cross arm breaker attempt from Hirsch, and Deeb, she escapes the cross arm breaker. And then Hirsch delivers a double knee arm breaker to Serena Deeb. And that's when Leila Hirsch takes control of the match by going after the arm. And then we had a German suplex to Serena Deeb. And so yeah, this is all Leila Hirsch. And then she, she delivered a moonsault, she goes to the top rope, tried to deliver a moonsault, and she missed. And Serena Deeb, she goes for a swinging neckbreaker to Hirsch. And she, yeah, she hits a swinging neckbreaker, followed up by a hangman's neckbreaker. And then she goes for a submission move to win. She went for a leg lock, it was um, I, I don't know the name of it, she went, it was a combination of a leg lock and an arm lock. And she got Hirsch to tap out. And Serena Deeb is still the NWA Women's World Champion. So yeah, this, this is good, this is great, this is what the women's match should be. This is exactly how the women's match should be in AEW. And then right after that, we had Alex Marvez interviewing Haruka Rosita, the AEW Women's Champion. And so he says that Nala Rose refuses to wrestle until she gets a AEW Women's Championship match. And so Rosita, she challenges Nala Rose at full gear for the AEW Women's Championship. And I think, I think the title is going right back to Nala Rose. Because Rosita, Rosita has done nothing with the championship. She, she don't have no competition, she defended the championship, but she don't have no competition. Because there's nobody else. So yeah, that, that's out of going back to Nala Rose. And then we had Shawn Spears versus VSK. With Toly Blanchard in Shawn Spears' corner. And so, this match wasn't long. We had a C4 to VSK to win, that was it. And after the match, we had somebody in a crowd throwing candy bars at Shawn Spear. Shawn Spears, and And this person was dressed up as a mascot, a bull mascot. And so Shawn Spears, he'd go after the guy and throws him in the ring. And the mascot is pleading for Shawn Spears not to attack him. And then he turns around, Shawn Spears turned around to Toly, Getting ready to beat the crap out of this guy. And so, the person that was in a bull mask Took off the mask And revealed himself to be Scorpio Sky. And so Toly Blanchard was telling Shawn Spears to turn around, turn around. And so Scorpio Sky, he delivers the TKO to Shawn Spears. And so next week, Next week, we have Miro, we have Miro versus Trent next week. Next week, we have Shawn Spears versus Scorpio Sky. We have Cody and the Gun Club, Billy Gunn and Austin Gun, Gunn Versus the Dark Order. John Silver, Number Ten, and Kocabana. And we have John Moxley and Eddie Kingston face to face next week, so that should be really good. And for full gear to add to the match, it was gonna be Orange Cassidy versus John Silver at the buy-in of full gear. So yeah, that, that should be good too. And now in our main event, we had the AEW Title Eliminator Match. It was Kenny Omega versus Pentagon with Phoenix in his corner. Now, it's supposed to be Phoenix, it was supposed to be Phoenix versus Kenny Omega Last night. But Phoenix, he got hurt, he got hurt last week. And his match with his brother. And so they all saying that He, he have a possible concussion, so they, they've taken, they're taking precautionary measures by taking him out of the tournament. So it's gonna be Penta versus Kenny Omega In the AEW Title Eliminator Match. And so once again, we had a long introduction from Justin Roberts About Kenny Omega, we had the Bikini Women coming out again this week. And they were wearing Pentagon and Phoenix's mess. So yeah, they, so they playing mind games, Kenny Omega playing mind games with the Lucha Bros. And so, yeah, Pentagon versus Kenny Omega, this is actually a rematch for their, from their All-In match Back in two thousand eighteen. And so we had We had Kenny Omega. We started off the match with a side headlock to Pentagon. And so Pentagon, yeah, he gets Kenny Omega gets the side headlock to Pen, Pentagon. And then Kenny Omega, he He plays, he playing mind games with the Lucha Bros. He has uh, the triple A, the triple A Mega Heavyweight type championship? Or the triple A Mega Championship? And he has it, he has it underneath his shirt, he was wearing a shirt, and he had the title underneath his shirt. And so he takes the shirt off, and he has the title wrapped around his shirt, I mean wrapped around his waist. And then he shows Phoenix the championship, because he, they were saying that he beat Phoenix for the title. And so, yeah, Kenny Omega playing mind games with those boys. And so we had a chop-off, we had a chop-off From, between Kenny Omega and Pentagon. So Pentagon, man, oh my god. This dude chopped the living hell out of Kenny Omega. He chopped him really hard, man. And then he takes the gloves off, he takes the glove off, and he throws it, tried to throw it to the referee. Kenny Omega intercepts it. And so Kenny Omega, he uses the glove to beat Pentagon with it. And so, yeah, he was beating him over and over and over again With the glove. And he started stomping a mud hole through him. And so, And then we had Pentagon deliver a backstabber to Kenny Omega. And then we had a topay con hero to Kenny Omega. And both of them are fighting in the crowd. And Kenny Omega, he hits a DDT on a, on a ice chest To Pentagon that was in the crowd. And so we had a hurricanrana to Pentagon, topay con hero to Pentagon. And then we had Pentagon reverses it, counters, I mean, he counters with a kick to Omega, a roundhouse kick to Omega. And we had a diving cross body to Kenny Omega outside of the ring. And Kenny Omega tries to go for his V trigger, he misses. And And then Pentagon, he counters with a pump kick to Kenny Omega in the face, right in the face. And, and then we had Pentagon deliver a middle rope sling blade to Kenny Omega. Covers Kenny Omega, kicks out a two. We had diving footstomp to Kenny Omega, kicks out a two. We had Snapdragon suplex to Pentagon. And we had another Snapdragon suplex to Pentagon. And then And then we had chop-sto Omega, so Pentagon is fighting back by delivering chops to him. And then we had a powerbomb, followed up by a knee strike to Pentagon, and Pentagon kicks out a two. And then we had a V trigger to Pentagon. And then we had the one, we had the Canadian Destroyer to Omega. So they were at the top of the rope, right? Pentagon was at the top of the rope, and he delivers a, a Canadian Destroyer to Pentagon, no, to Omega, I mean. He delivers a Canadian Destroyer, he delivers a Canadian Destroyer to Kenny Omega on the outside ramp. And then, he brings him back, he brings him back into the ring and delivers a package power driver to Kenny Omega For a quick, for a near fall. I thought he, I thought he had him right there. But Omega kicked out. And then, we had a V trigger to Pentagon, and he tries to go for the one winged angel. Pentagon escapes, and he snaps Kenny Omega's arms. And then he superkicks Kenny Omega. And then Kenny Omega, Kenny Omega, He delivers a knee strike to Pentagon in midair, so Pentagon, he was going to the top rope, tried to deliver a hop line move, and Kenny Omega delivered a knee strike To Pentagon in midair. And then we had the one winged angel to Pentagon for the win. Kenny Omega wins and is advancing to the finals To face Hangman Adam Page at full gear. And the winner of that match will be going against John Moxley at a later date for the AEW World Heavyweight Championship. So yeah, man, that was the end of this show, that was the end of the match, and that was the end of the show. And yeah, this is a great show. Full Gear is looking good. And And they're getting you ready for full gear. They giving you a reason to watch this show, they giving you a reason to order, order this show. And they giving you a reason to watch next week's show. So yeah, next week is the go-home show, I believe it is. For full, for, for full gear, I mean. So yeah, this, the next week's show should be looking good, man. But yeah, this is a awesome, 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 awesome show. I loved it, loved every second of it. But, yeah, that was, that was the end of the AEW Dynamite. And this has been the Ryan Awesome Show. If you liked this video, hit the thumbs up, what you waiting for? Hit the thumbs up. And if you're new here, subscribe to the channel. If you, and if you wanna see more videos like this, Hit the bell for all notifications. And ladies and gentlemen, this has been the Ryan Awesome Show. And that's That.